I take this opportunity to thank the Chamber of Congress, TSJC, and the media for being here, and of course, all of you for taking time out of your evening. It was one of the darkest periods in World War II. And George, I like to read a lot about World War II and history. But George Patton was in a room with his people and he said, "If everyone in this room is thinking alike," I apologize, I thought I was going last. "If everyone in the room is thinking alike and someone is not thinking alike." Again, my name is Aaron Williamson. I was born in Trinidad in 1975. Graduated in, I need to get this right, 1994. Shortly after that, went to college here for a few years and then joined the Navy. Came back after the Navy, worked in a few industries here in Trinidad. Found myself in a position where I needed to move up north. In 2010, I returned back to Trinidad after gaining a lot of experience. So I started working for a gas company, worked up to a project manager, and eventually district manager, and finally to state manager of operations for them. This gave me a lot of good industry experience with budgeting, directing personnel, just managing projects, things like that. Back to the World War II issue. If someone in the room is the one that's thinking different than everybody else, I would say that's usually me. I think that's one of my strongest traits. I'm an outside-of-the-box thinker and I think if any of you know me probably know that's true, so I call those people. If any of you know me, you'll know that's true. So that's one of my strengths is to think outside of the box. I'm an honest, hard-working, and I care critically for Trinidad. I was born here, raised here, my family's here. And I'm here for the same reason you are tonight, because I care. I want to see Trinidad succeed. I know we have a lot of challenges, but working together, with me reflecting your voice on city council, I think we can achieve great things and continue to build on what's been done in the past. We should work together for a safer environment for us, public places, parks, streets, and a stronger and ongoing economy, one that's not subject to boom and bust. That hopefully concludes my opening remarks.
I just love that we have so many passionate candidates up here. And for our second candidate, Aaron Obeltry.
You're all getting a spelling lesson tonight, and there are two ways to spell Aaron. I'm Aaron Obeltry and I'm running for city council. I love every minute of this process so far. Unlike many of the people who are here and on the stage, I didn't get the opportunity to grow up in the same town where I was born. I was born in Florida and then moved to Ohio and then South Carolina, and then Rhode Island, and then back to Ohio where I finished high school and went to college. I got a bachelor's degree in political science in Ohio. My first job out of college took me to Tucson, and I ended up living in Arizona for thirty years, which was kind of a surprise to me. But I learned the value of living in a community for a long period of time. My kids got the opportunity to be grown up in the same place where they were born. In 1998, I got to pursue my long time degree before I went to law school. And I loved every minute of it. Sometimes when you have to wait for a while to go to pursue something, it becomes even sweeter when it happens. I graduated Macaw County, and I graduated in the top ten percent of my class. I clerked for an appellate court judge afterwards. And then I went to work for a law firm called Lewis and Roca, which is kind of a western regional business law firm. And I was with them for about ten years. Along the, my practice at Lewis and Roca focused on real estate and litigation, employment law, and creditors' rights. I also did some really interesting promotional immigration work with Iraqi interpreters who had served our troops overseas. A long way, I became interested in defensive conditioning and I eventually got, became an R.I.C. five firearms instructor. In 2012, I retired from the practice of logging to a health condition and began Act Two of my life. Five years ago, my partner Liz and I moved to Trinidad. We visited on a road trip and became completely, I have to say obsessed with Trinidad. We learned everything that we could about it. Took a while to find a wonderful house, but we did buy a house. And the children and the bikes that we bought from are here tonight. We love living in Trinidad. Right now, I serve on the Historic Preservation Commission, and I've been doing that for about three years. And we're finally ready to receive applications for historic designation, so get those applications in. I'm also on the creative district board, and I serve now on the community advisory panel for Trinidad space to create commons. I've been thinking about running for city council for some time this year, and I put a lot of talking to different people and doing research into it to figure out if I thought it would be worth doing. And I have definitely discovered that I think there are things that I've already been capable that will help city council.
Hi, everybody. You want to take my phone out? So I know we're three minutes with me and that would look like. So thank you, everybody, for showing up tonight for this. Running for city council here in Trinidad. Thank you for putting this all together. I am not a political man whatsoever. This is something so far outside of the box for me that it sometimes is a little bit hard for me to articulate, especially in front of people. I came here to Trinidad about three years ago. I came here on a council for a client and just really fell in love with the community. And fell in love with the idea of what it's like to live in a small town, what it's like to have your kids go to a school to where they not only know the kids from church, but they know them from basketball, and all the other kids up there. Everybody knows everybody. And we were living in the Denver Metroplex area, and that was just never going to happen. You know, everyone is in their suburban way of, you know, driving from their work straight to their home, through their garage door, and living in their McMansion that they have over there. That just didn't seem like a life to me. You know, coming down here and seeing the, what some people call the slow pace of life. I call it good life. And I wanted, I wanted to be good. Remember the day where I went home and I told my wife that we're moving to Trinidad? Because I saw the opportunity in this town a long, long time ago, you know. I own four businesses in this community now. I've been here for minimum of two years. And I see a future, and I'm all in. I'm a hundred percent all-in with this community. And I believe that, I believe that we're at this precipice right now with all this momentum that Trinidad has created over the past couple of years. And I think that we need some outside-of-the-box ideas to help push that forward. Again, I didn't write anything down. This is all from the head here today. So thank you very much and I appreciate your support.
Thanks, Jay. And now for Terry Brown.
Good evening, everybody. And like everybody before me, thank you to all the men and women who put this together for us tonight. And if I can, one additional shout-out. What Nancy and Howard Lackey did on Saturday down on the river for a cleanup was just above. And I've lived in the west now for about fifty years. But every once in a while, there'll be an egg come out, and people will say, "He's not one of us." And it's true. For me, it all began in a little town up on the Canadian border in the Adirondack Park. My parents were Canadians. Mom came from Ottawa, dad came from Toronto. And we'd lived, and I graduated from high school in Tupperlake and went off to the service and came home late in the sixties, nineteen seventy, seventy-one. And I had an opportunity to come and play golf at Western State College in Gunnison. And that was, I think, memory holds, in seventy-one or seventy-two, and I've been a Westerner ever since. Regardless of what might sneak out once in a while. I have to, I gotta get this in under three minutes. But this is a short story about my mom and dad. Like I said, they were born in the early twenties in respective towns in Canada. Came in the late twenties. They were married on Saturday of Thanksgiving weekend, nineteen forty-one. They went home to Canada to celebrate their honeymoon. And on their way back, on Sunday morning, the seventh of December, the border was closed. And that's how they found out that the Japanese had bombed Pearl Harbor. And six months later, my dad and my uncles and the guys they went to school with, they were all in the Marine Corps headed to a place called Paris Island in South Carolina. I would be delayed a few years before I made the same trip. Terry and I came to Trinidad four years ago and purchased our home just north of here on Tillotson.
And now, it is the media and their questions for our panel.
This is not for you. Thank you. This is not for the audience, this is for me and my family. I'd love to introduce you to things that you've heard about this city. What is the one thing that each of you, you want to hang your hat on? What is your passion project for, things that will happen in Trinidad?
I would say what I'm most passionate about is increasing safety in Trinidad. We all have that concern. We want a safe place to raise our family. You can't have anything else that's important to us without that base aspect of safety. You can't have a good economy, you can't have good schools, you can't have good healthcare, you can't have a good ambulance district. You can't have anything else. You can't attract more people to a place that isn't safe. And I'm not saying that Trinidad is not a safe place, but I think it's something we need to be focused on in this current environment. So that is something that I would work towards in city council. And that's to an end, because we can't have all those things I spoke about, everything through economy, increased industry, better infrastructure. All of those will come, but I think we need a good safe space to work on. So that's what I'm passionate about.
The primary thing that I'll work on is establishing economic health and stability for this community. I see that as requiring, what Aaron just talked about, a focus and a repair of our public safety. And we need to work on the issues that people continually bring up with, I'm sure all of us, as we've been talking with our neighbors about Trinidad. We also need to improve our public relations as a city. And so that's another thing that we can work on in terms of how we present ourselves to the rest of the state and to the world. A lot of people are going to turn their attention, their focus to us. We need to be as competent, efficient, and professional as we can be. And finally, we need to focus on our concrete improvements. We need to fix what's needs repaired. We need to invest in the future and have a plan about those things. And I think those three things will create economic health and stability, and that they're necessary for those things.
So one of the things I want to hang my hat on, it's something that's most important to me, is the safety of the children and the education of the children in this community. I believe that to be the ground rule number one of that Trinidad has lots of problems. And we have a limited amount of budget that we have. We don't have that much money that we can solve all the problems that Trinidad has all at once. But if we have a base, well, we're going to start with it. Start with our kids. We're going to start with a good education system. Start with good programs out there to help them. Keep them safe from sexual predators is something that's very prevalent in today's society. And, you know, when you have programs like this and you have good schools with great, great teachers, that's the type of thing that people want to move to the smaller communities to get. They want to get out of the Metroplex. They still want to have good schools. They want to be in a safer place for their communities. And, you know, as Aaron said, if we can't have nice things, there are always going to be trash. So we want to clean up the image of our city and we want to keep it safe for our children.
There's no question that it all started for me probably in the first week or the first two weeks here. Terry was at work and I was on my bike, and I was on Commercial Street. And I came to a bookstore that said, "Looking for help." And I've been with Margie and Paul Peifer for over three years now, and it's led to being a member of the library board. It has led to meeting the Chrislers and finding my way to the mountains to make the trails that we enjoy today. What I found is a community that is just wall-to-wall wonderful, wonderful, wonderful volunteer spirits. There isn't anything that we can't.
Hey, Bill, World Journal. I've got five questions here. They're all similar. They come down to homelessness, transients, and rising crime. What are your ideas on dealing with these issues and imparting to the people of Trinidad a sense of safety? So round off the question.
We'll go ahead and start on the side of the table now. Terry?
Yep.
Homelessness is so tough. I've been warned to stay away from this so tight as we talk here tonight, because it's so divisive. There are so many different, there's so many little communities with so many different ideas. And I really believe that we're not going to go forward as a community until we resolve those issues. Sometime in the past year, Julie Knudsen, myself, Mallory, Pat Fletcher, two or three others, we took the bus and we went to Canyon City. And those people had started a program in their town for homelessness. And just a second to finish. There wasn't one of, oh, and Louis Lopez was with us also from the county board commissioners. There wasn't one of us that left our two or three hours that day with those people in Canyon City not saying to ourselves, "O M G. Look what they have done here." And they're literally next door to us. So those issues can be successfully dealt with and...
Homelessness, crime, yeah, that's, I was warned about that one too. But I'm not scared, so. I think that Trinidad needs to do what a lot of all of our other bigger cities are doing. Look at what cities like Golden are doing. You look at what Dale or Beaver Creek are doing. What they're doing is, they're creating areas, wildlife sensitivity areas in their communities to not allow people to camp on their rivers and not damage the sensitive wildlife area that it is. You know, we need to start taking our rivers seriously and to what it is. It's a jewel. It's the headwaters of the Perigatory River. It's close to the headwaters of the water source as, you know, Grand Lake is to the Colorado. So it's a big deal. Our watershed is very, very pristine that we have, you know, garbage on our river that is there, is there constantly. And, you know, I don't, I don't think that until we clean up our river fronts and use the rather mispronounced words you're using, give our police the bite that they need with the rights and the laws for them to help clean up our community.
Thank you, Jay. Aaron?
I've spent time with a lot of people talking about this issue. And what I typically try to communicate is that we as a community have to talk about it. We have to understand that it is a problem. We have to stop ignoring it, which is basically what we're doing right now and expecting our police department to deal with people that we find difficult to deal with. We can't do that anymore. We need to decide what sort of resources we want to put into this effort, whether it's nothing and hope that people go away, or whether it's building a shelter where we help people get their lives back on track. We have to hear from you about what you want to do about this situation. I'd like to spend some time doing research as well to find out what other cities have done that have been effective to deal with it. I know our police department feels like its hands are tied quite a bit in terms of what they can ask of people who are hanging around in public spaces. And I know that we don't have a lot of ordinances that are particularly effective, so we need to fix those things.
I absolutely believe it's a problem, and it's a big problem. One that we need to confront head-on, because a problem unaddressed will just continue to grow. That being said, I agree with a lot of my fellow running mates up here that it's something that we should work on together as a community, decide what that consensus is. But ultimately, society is governed by rules. All of us here tonight follow rules. We're governed by that. It separates a civil society from uncivil unrest. We are all subject to rules. So I think we need to equip our police with the rules that are very able to enforce. And as Jay mentioned, make a system in place that protects public spaces for what they are, to be public spaces. Our women, children, and men should be free and safe to walk wherever they want and however they want in our public spaces. That's something that we should all be entitled to. That's what we need to work towards.
Do you have another question? Jay, will you start this time?
Sure.
Eli, Long Key CRT Radio. This is for everyone. What policies, procedures, and city ordinances will you, as elected, advocate to be changed, and what changes do you suggest?
Well, I think one of the first things that I will advocate for is to give our police departments some more bite. Give them the, give them what they need necessary to do their job. I feel that, and I've spoken with them, I had a coffee with a company restaurant, not to Montblanc, and I spoke to many of the officers and the children. You know, they would just like a little bit more bite in order to enforce some laws. So we don't keep having this same happen over and over and over and over again. We need to change those laws and give those guys an upper hand.
I agree with what Jay said. I think a lot of the consensus that's coming out of this is that we have to look at our vagrancy laws and our trespassing laws and make them do what we would like to see them do. And then back up the police in that regard. I think we also, I'm not sure if we want to change it, but I think we need to have a more active code enforcement in Trinidad. I know that we have a code that says how property is to be maintained. I think that we're, I don't know whether it's not precise enough or that there are issues that they think that the city might get into some sort of a legal problem. But anything like that, those are the kinds of ordinances that I'd like to look at and ask some questions about so that I make sure, as to us, that I'm capable and the city council's capable, that our legal advice that we're following is what we should do and the best legal advice that we can get. Because I feel like people are frustrated and don't know what to do with that frustration.
Again, I agree with what's being said up here. That would be my main focus, is to allow the city of Trinidad to have ordinances that address that problem of vagrancy, homelessness. And there's going to be multiple ways to attack that. But once we are able to correct that, we're going to be, need to focus on potential economic growth. So relating to what Jay said, we have to equip our police officers to do their job. Not only that, we have to equip our city workers to be able to do their job too. As if we expect growth as a town, we're going to need to look to the future to develop infrastructures, sewer, power, water, to be able to meet those upcoming challenges. And that's going to be a very forward-looking plan. That's something that we can all work together towards.
I think I would be a little remiss in one of my duties. We're going to fill three seats on the council, and that means we're giving up three. And I spent a lot of time in council meetings in the last couple of years, and we're losing three really good folks. So we really are going to have our hands full. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because Councilman Lopez has suggested a couple of times in the last couple of years, that I've listened to him, that one of the things that we can do to combat waste and the problems that are coming at us in our landfill and in other places. Carlos has come up with the idea of finding a way to take some of our waste, plastic, glass, whatever, and turn it into a product that we can sell in the markets of Colorado, in the West. We could build a factory of sports here and pay people really good wages.
Aaron, you'll be first on the next question.
Okay, Bill, World Journal. How do you, candidates, feel about the outsourcing of our utility infrastructure such as sewer, smart meters, electricity? And the questioner from the audience wants to know if water is vexed.
I don't necessarily think it's a bad idea. I think if we are getting professional service from those providers, then yes. But it has to be watched very carefully to make sure that we're not spending money we don't need to for services that we can do in-house.
I would agree that there's certain tasks, when you look at it, it's best to let professionals do what their profession is. In the long run, it'll allow... In the long run, it'll allow money to be saved and a better product. If you look at any project, when you are starting, there's a certain cost of startup, a certain amount of time for people to adapt to the new technology. So, for one-time rollouts, things like of that nature, it makes a lot of sense to bring in, um, outside professionals. Also, um, what that allows is the current city workers that are executing their tasks at a current high level of profession to, uh, continue doing that and best serve our needs. Um, so, uh, I would definitely agree with outsourcing where and when it's appropriate.
I think everybody that's here understands that just recently, we gave up or we lost our city manager. And over the last three, four, five weeks, Mike has sat in and done a job. And as I sit, uh, and, and listen to the rhetoric or the, the conversations that go back and forth between the mayor and the council and Mike, you just, if you're me, you can't come away with any other impression that this guy knows is stuck. And before we go out and farm out, uh, any of our utilities, anything that we're doing now, Mike's got to sit at that table. And he's then got to come back and advise the council and the mayor uh, whether or not he thinks we're getting a good deal. Because I can't imagine how we could have been any luckier to have lost us, uh, our, our city manager and gotten Mike to sit in for however long he's going to be there. But we're fortunate indeed.
So, um, I feel a little bit of a different way, guys. Um, I, you know, if, if outsourcing means that my bills are going to be lower for my business, um, cool, but that's not what it means for me. It means that I'm still going to be paying the exact same amount I'm actually going to be paying for my small business. 341 North Commercial Street, I pay almost $2,500 a month in electricity bill. That is huge, absolutely huge, every month, and it gets worse in the wintertime. So, outsourcing to, to, to make the, make bills cheaper overall for everybody in the community, I don't really see that, foresee that happening anytime soon. I think that it's to go that far outside of the box to get somebody in, um, when we have a, uh, when we have an energy source that we're right at the base of, right at the base of, and we've been at the base for a really long time. We have the ability to bring ourselves cheap power here from our own community. We're outsourcing to somebody else. I think we would need to revisit our relationship with oil and gas to lower our overall rates here for the community and citizens of Trinidad.
More questions?
Absolutely.
Darren, you'll answer.
Okay, I've got two more questions coming in from the audience. Uh, one of the candidates said tonight that Trinidad has a lot of problems. What is the biggest problem you see in Trinidad?
I, um, just want to take a quick opportunity to respond to that, sorry, what Jay said. I, I completely agree with, uh, estimation of leveraging our, um, assets that we have around this, uh, city. Um, I took the last question to mean functioning of specific tasks, so I'm endorsing outsourcing of that. But we should look to what our, um, areas are here. To answer that question, uh, every, every community has problems. Uh, that's absolutely true. And I'm, I'm going to stick to what I first said. I, I think that our biggest concern here is safety. Everything that we've talked about tonight, good economy, healthcare, school system, you can have all of that, you're not able to attract anyone if you don't have safe streets. And I'm not saying that's where we're at, but it's could, could be potentially where we're heading if we don't prove that fact. So, that's, that's where I think the focus needs to be.
I think our biggest problem is that we need to keep our eyes on the ball. There are a lot of things that need fixing. And there are a lot of things that went unrepaired for a long time because of the desperate straits that we were in financially. Now we have a little bit of money and we're starting to, to handle and address those things. But sometimes it's just the squeaky wheel that gets the grease. And we have to be thoughtful about where we're putting resources and have a long-term plan. I'd like the city to have more of a focus on its comprehensive plan and guiding itself by that because I think it's a good point, so...
Okay, I, at, at the risk of sounding redundant, uh, I'm going to go back to some places that I was a few minutes ago. It, it's true, we've just been said, we have some issues. Just puts us in the same boat as the rest of the country. However, you know, from my experience again with the keepers and with, uh, Wayne, uh, and, uh, Marty Fitzgerald, Wayne Pritchard, and the Chrislers, and, you know, right on down the line, this town is just wall-to-wall down. And if we make the resources available to those folks that are on the commissions and on the boards, there's very, very little that this town can't, given a little bit of time. And I don't mean 20 years. Give us two years, three years, four years, and we're going to make a big difference. I mean, I sat in the front seat with Marty and Paul and some of the other folks at the bookstore, and I watched just in the two years that I've been here, what happened to Commercial Street. Does anybody, does anybody have pictures of what Commercial Street looked like two and a half years ago? Now when you walk out the door of the bookstore and look across the street and up and down, it's amazing what happened. And not 20 years either.
Um, I think it goes without saying that, uh, that, that safety for me, uh, for the people of our community is something that's, um, one of, one of the biggest stretches that we really have to get over. But I think something that's a little bit less talked about, that's probably one of the most important things, is the relationship the city has with the county. I think the city and the county need to come hand-in-hand together and really tackle some of the problems of Los Ananas County together. And I, I think that's, that's going to be the thing that puts not only Los Ananas County on the next level, but the city of Trinidad at the next level as well.
Terry, will you answer the next question first?
Eli, Longmont KCRT Radio, this is a question from the audience. Trinidad and La Jolla are similar, have similar populations. The library of La Jolla has about twice the budget as the Trinidad library. Do you feel that our library should be preserved and enhanced by increasing its budget?
Okay, you know, and I, I might have a little bit of a, of, of, an edge over some of the other folks that are sitting here with me because I've been on the library board now for two, two and a half years. So I go with Karen Regal and Pat Fletcher. And again, back to the keepers, they're going to think they're running this town by the time we have done here tonight. But I know a lot about what's going on at the library in terms of the librarian and the folks that live there, uh, or, or work there. The folks who are, the folks who are part-time workers, they need a raise. Mallory needs desperately, uh, an assistant librarian. Uh, she's really, really, really tight with how much money she makes, but some of us at the bookstore think Mallory could use a few more dollars. Uh, we just think, uh, those of us who spend a lot of time either in the bookstore or at the library, that this, this library is one of our great institutions. And it's being, for some of us who, who spend down there, we think it's being neglected. And it's time to pick it up and get on with taking care of our library the way it needs to be taken care of.
Do, do I think the library needs more money or that, uh, that La Jolla has a better library than us? Uh, I think La Jolla has better grant writers than us. You know, I think that's really, more than anything, you know, I think La Jolla has a dedicated grant writer in there for them. That's all that that person does all day long is, is, is write grants. And I think that's, that's something the city desperately needs. So, full-time grant writers, that's all that person does is go out and search money for the community and how we can leverage those dollars from those grants to help better our community here. Do I think that our library needs more money? I think it absolutely does need more money, but I think it needs some safety issues uh, looked at first in order for us to be able to say that.
Darren Ogletree?
I've never been to the La Jolla Library, so I have no real basis to compare it. I've been to our library several times, and I think it's a beautiful building. I think we are so lucky that we have this Carnegie, um, building that was given to us back in the early 1900s. Uh, in my conversations with people in Trinidad in preparation for this race, consistently, issues with the library come up. And it's not about the services that the library provides. It's about what's happening at the library and a feeling among people that there's a diversion of, of resources to, to serve the transient homeless population in our library. And I think that comes, it comes back to what I was saying before is that we're ignoring a problem, and it's manifesting itself in various ways. And one of the ways is by what's happening at the library. A, a lady told me that, uh, someone in her family volunteers and they, that the next thing they were going to have to do was to go through training on how to pick up sharks. And that she was, she didn't want to do that. But that's what we're asking our library staff to do, and that's why, because of the inappropriate.
Again, I, I just wanted to tie this quickly back into my, my hang my hat on moment. Um, we deserve a safe place that's not any different than the libraries. I'm going to stay plainly, I do not feel comfortable having my child at the library who I observe there. The library belongs to you, the citizens of Trinidad, and you are the ones that should, um, determine what goes on there. So, a source of new money, uh, regardless of where it comes, Trinidad at large should be asked how they want that to be spent and in what way. But, um, whatever happens with the library, the safety of it and, um, the availability to the public and even to the, the, the safety of the workers there should be given consideration. It's a public library, not a homeless aid station.
Bill, uh, World Journal, uh, this is an audience question. Uh, when was the last city council meeting you attended? And what was the most important takeaway?
Uh, last city council meeting I attended was my liquor license for Los Ananas County. My takeaway, uh, from the, the, the city council meeting, it was confusing to me. There was, uh, there was a lot of things that I didn't understand. Uh, my civic involvement was almost non-existent before I came here to Los Ananas County. Being in the Denver metropolitan area, I felt like I was just a small cog in the wheel and what I said or did didn't matter. But I know that that's absolutely not the case here in Los Ananas County. I know that my actions speak volumes. And I know that, um, what I do every day with work and what, um, what, what I step forth to lead the example for my children is super important to me. Thank you.
Darren Ogletree?
I attended most recently a work session, I think, and I've attended several in the past month or so. Um, I haven't made a habit of it, unlike Terry, who goes there this morning. But my takeaway from a work session that I heard was, um, a gentleman came forward to talk about the noise ordinance and enforcement of the noise ordinance because there was someone who consistently was driving up and down his street with a really loud motorcycle that had been modified or a car or something like that. And so the city council was asking him questions, and basically, he was expressing his frustration that though he had complained about it to the police department and said, "This is when this happens, and you can sit here and watch it happen", he was being expected to go forward and complain about his neighbor and testify for it about it. So, what I saw about that is that we do need, um, our police department needs more help. They can't do all these things we're asking them to do. So I took that away from it, and I took, the other part of it was that it is a tough thing to have a controversy with your neighbor and that we need to help people to be able to talk those things through.
I've had the good fortune to be able to attend several, um, uh, state council meetings recently. I believe the last one was probably two meetings ago. What, what struck me most is the amount of power and influence the six plus the mayor, seven, people have over the day-to-day lives of so many people. Um, I, I have great respect for that. So, influence, where ordinances are made to have, um, influence over the whole town or, uh, decisions, say for a liquor license that could, uh, help a business or any various number of things that maybe might really just help one individual person. Long story short, um, I was really in awe of, of that, uh, power and have a lot of respect for it. With that, what I, I'm really committing to the people of Trinidad is to be a conduit for your voice, to, um, have your opinions brought to that, uh, table.
Uh, my last, uh, city council meeting was yesterday. It was a budget for 2020 special meeting. Excuse me, Phil, I'm not getting the terminology correct. But to sit where I was sitting and listen to, uh, the budget as it exists now, early on, uh, going into 2020, and it's going to take a lot more work. Maybe the, the mayor will have a minute to talk about that when it comes up. But there's a lot more, this isn't, the, this isn't the end of the law or the dumb deal. But the budget that exists now is going to be short, uh, X dollars to be in balance. So, what Carlos and the mayor and, uh, Karen and Michelle weren't at yesterday's meeting, but they went back and forth rusty and all of them. Okay, where can we find within this budget some money that doesn't necessarily have to be spent, that we can get it close to balance? And it was a tough hole that they were throwing for the better part of two hours. You know, and it's going to go on for another month or month and a half or two months until it's finally settled in December, but...
Let's start with Darren Ogletree.
This was brought up a little earlier, but I don't think we really addressed it. I'm going to kind of read this one, right, it was interesting. I saw a drug dealer down in front of Safeway's avenue. He said, "They can't do anything if they don't see it." What is your guys' take on that, and what do you think you can do about the drug problem here?
I'm sorry that that happened.
Um, I'm sorry for that person that they, they saw that. I think we need, uh, again, we need more cops on the street and we need better training for our police officers. Quite often, they pay for their own training, and I think that's ridiculous. I think we, um, we need to train them how to deal specifically with the drug problem in our community. It's a big one. I went on a ride-along with Captain Duran not too long ago, and I was on the Citizens Police Academy in 2017. And when you do that, you get to see, they're very transparent about what they deal with. They deal with very real 21st century problems in Trinidad. And there are not very many of them. We have three right now that are on the street at any given time. So, anytime there's any sort of, uh, an emergency, they all three go there, and that leaves the rest of the city basically unprotected. We have several drug houses that need to be addressed. And, um, so we need to make it happen.
Again, not to kill a dead horse, but, uh, this, this is really what, what I am about. If we can't have public safety in Trinidad, it's hard to have the rest of everything. So there's a lot of challenge there. It's my understanding we are several police officers short. There's multiple problems to that. The police academy is a long endeavor. The police, it's my understanding that this is considered a trained police department where men are, men and women are trained and then move on to other departments. And we need to correct those problems so that we can attract, retain and have people in the training pipeline, men and women that are going to fill the shoes of those that are exiting. So if the police can't police it, it's going to continue. So we need to empower them to be able to do that through the training, budget and equipment. That's where we would be at.
It's just such a tough one, you know? So I can't help but think that somebody saw, legitimately saw somebody yesterday at Safeway pushing drugs. And that of course is not good and that is, that of course is an issue that we have to find a way of approaching and dealing with. But who knows how many thousands of people went in and out of Safeway yesterday with their children in the cars? And to the best of our knowledge, from what we're being told, there was one drug dealer from thousands of people that went in and out of that store. How much resources are we ready to throw at one drug dealer? Or do we know whether there were more?
So my business is on the corner of Commercial and Cedar. I see drug deals go down every day. What resources should we, would be applied to this? I say all of them. This is a huge, huge problem within our community. It's easy to be a drug dealer in Trinidad because you can get a little. And understanding that what I'm saying could directly put me in harm's way because there are people out there who don't like the messages that I don't like drugs out on the street. It's not safe for our kids out on the street. These drug dealers who are out on there get me really fired up for my business and for my children and that's the message that I want to bring is that I'm not, I'm not afraid of these, of the trap houses and the drug houses. We know where they are. You know where they are. We should come together as a community and clean this community up for our children.
Eli Von O K C R T Radio, this is from the audience again. What incentives do you feel would help main street businesses succeed in bringing more food and music venues to our area that are not corporate?
I really appreciate that question and obviously I really care for safety. Past that, I really have a heart to see Trinidad grow. I don't think it's Trinidad government's responsibility to cause, to bring in private businesses, but what I think is our responsibility as a city is to make an environment where small businesses will thrive. I really support small businesses. I have a ton of respect for small business owners. And what Trinidad can do is clean up our town, use Colorado lottery funds that to build, improve the Riverwalk, connect our new state parks together with a clean, viable trail system. And we can have a world-class attraction for tourists. If we bring the people, we can bring the dollars and small business will thrive, a bunch of new restaurants, a bunch of new shops. We bring the people, the industry and shops will follow.
I don't think there's any doubt that some of the things that we're doing have been good for the community. What they're doing at S C R T is good for the community. The car show in September is good for the community. The music fest that we have is good for the community. So if we're going to continue on down that line, we're going to need a program that helps us deal with the cost of bringing those people to our town. And I, I really on that same page as you are about how they're not going to come except for a weekend or two, but they're not going to stay until they begin to like what they see. And right now we have some warrants. And if you're here for a weekend and that's what you see, that's what you take when you leave.
I think the one thing that we could do is just kind of mirror it with a lot of other larger municipalities are doing. You know, a lot of other larger municipalities have this old business area district to where everybody who's in the business area district puts a small amount of money into a copper every month. And guess what? You're a nonprofit, you guys, we can all work together as a board and leverage our own money against what our wants are as business owners here in Los Anamis County. It shouldn't always be the responsibility of government. We should come to be able to come together as business owners and make that a possibility as well too. You know, and another thing, I use, I use Florida Colorado as an example. Florida Colorado about 10 or 15 years ago wasn't the most desirable place to live, but they cleaned up, they cleaned up the town, they cleaned up the crime, they started building trails for mountain bikes and they made the schools better and guess what? Now Florida is one of the number one places to live in Colorado because guess what? They made it nice and businesses are moving there because they want, they want to be around that stuff. They want to be in the, people want to be in the mountains. They want to be around what they like to do. And that's what Trinidad is. It's a collection of really, really awesome things and we need to focus on that for the future. This is actually the reason why I came to Trinidad. The reason why I came to Trinidad was the eight businesses that work here, they're every other major mountain town and that's opportunity. So.
Can you hear me? A lot of what's been said already is important. Where there are feet coming into our downtown area, people who are in businesses will run and serve those people. So we need to keep bringing people into the downtown area. So we don't, we don't have a lot of control about what businesses choose to locate here, but what we can control at City Hall and what I think the city council's involvement in this is to see to it that we get a city manager who knows how to deal with businesses, who knows how to set up a smooth application process so that someone coming to us and saying they'd like to put in a specific kind of restaurant, knows exactly what they have to do, who they need to speak with, the zoning of the place that they're looking for, if there are any infrastructure improvements they're going to need to put, what parts of the city we'd like to expand into. All those questions, we should know the answers to and should not leave it to the business person to sort their way through and become frustrated in the process. And at this time, we have to end our questions so we can keep moving on. We'll have a three-minute closing from each candidate and we will start reverse. So Terry Brown will be first up.
I'm going to pass on the closing because I'm not ready.
My closing statement's going to be pretty, pretty short, sweet. I think the infrastructure of Trinidad is probably underneath our feet. I have a friend here who scoped a lot of the water. We've got a big mess underneath our feet. We have, we have a homelessness problem, we have a drug, we have a crime problem. We have lots of problems. And if you choose me for city council, this is something that I won't stray away from. This is something that I will tackle head-on. I'm not afraid to ask the tough questions. I'm not afraid to go against what everybody else is doing because I have my own opinion and I'm willing to fight hard for that. Willing to fight hard for the children of this community, the people of this community, the businesses of this community. Thank you.
So far, I'm still enjoying this process. I'm really enjoying hearing from all of us what our thoughts are about this community as I enjoy speaking with all of you and for lots of different people who have different interests in this town. And I think we need to talk together. And I think we do have problems, but here's the deal, being a small place, those problems are surmountable if we have the will to do it. That's all it takes. So many times when I've heard stories about Trinidad, what I continually come back to is that that was our fault. It wasn't that we had a plague or something else, we made a bad decision. So the reason I want to be on city council is because I want to help us make good decisions. I want to ask really hard questions. I don't want us to get away with ignoring problems that we have, even when it's awkward to talk about them. So I'm very thankful for tonight and very thankful for what I hear and your enthusiasm back to us is really meaningful to me. Again, the thing that I would focus on is our economic health and our stability as a town. I would work on our public safety issues. I would work on our public relations and I would work on our public improvements. We haven't talked a lot about that, but there's a ton of work we have to do. And we have to get ourselves stabilized so that we can bring the tax income that's going to be necessary to repair lawsuits or we're not a community at all. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your interest. I look forward to talking with more of you and please consider voting. Appreciate your listening.
First off, thank you so much for coming out again. Really appreciate it. I want to be very clear about something and I think, I feel strongly, but I speak for everyone behind me as well. In no way tonight, in this discussion, have we intended in any way to say that the police department isn't trying their very best. They go out every single day and put their lives on the line. For us, the citizens of Trinidad, they do their very best with what they're provided. I think what we're saying is we need to find a way to provide them more. So we owe a debt of gratitude to every police officer in this town. Past that, we really need to, we really need to appreciate the municipal workers that we have. They're out there doing the very best that they can and their efforts need to be rewarded and thanked by us. Past that, we are at a crossroads in Trinidad. We have a great history, a proud history. We have great potential sources of revenue, I-25 running right through our town, the Los Anamis River in the form of a Riverwalk, two, now two great state parks that can be connected and be a huge tourist attraction. Great people and unlimited potential for new businesses. We just need to work together to do that. Being a longtime resident of Trinidad and passionate about Trinidad, with deep roots here and honesty and integrity, I want to move forward and work to represent you, the citizens of Trinidad, bring your voice to that table. So I appreciate your vote. Also, in the back, if any of you wish to support me, I've brought some yard signs. If you take them home and sure appreciate you putting that up. Thank you for your time.
He kept that microphone pretty high. I'd like to give a round of applause to all of our candidates. We're going to go ahead and ask our candidates to go ahead and take a seat and we're going to bring up our two mayoral candidates, Robert Sinfor and Phil Rico.